All right, we're gonna go ahead and call this meeting of the Capitalola City Council to order. Uh, can we have a roll call, please?
Yes. Councilmember Botor.
Aye.
Councilmember Bertrand.
Aye.
Councilmember Story.
Aye.
Vice Mayor Brooks.
Aye.
Mayor Peterson.
Aye. Uh, please join us in the flag of allegiance. I pledge allegiance to the flag of the United States of America and to the republic which stands one nation under God, indivisible, with liberty and justice for all. All right. Uh, can we get a report on closed session? Yes, uh, director giving staff. Okay, announcing, are there any additional materials for tonight's meeting?
Yes, there were two items regarding, or excuse me, two emails regarding item eight C. In favor of staff recommendation.
All right. Uh, item four, is there any additions or deletions to tonight's agenda?
Staff would recommend pulling item eight A, beginning that item, uh, to the day done, sir.
Okay, we have staff recommendation, I can make the general consensus from the council, a thumbs up, if we're okay with moving that item? All right, great, so we're gonna, uh, move item eight A. Or excuse me, pull item eight A from tonight's, uh, meeting. Uh, now is the time for public comments, so if there's any member of the public that would like to address the council on items not on tonight's agenda, now would be the time. Now we'll turn it over to Larry, our moderator, to let us know if there's any public comments received.
All right, I do not see any attendees with hands up, and I do not see any emails.
All righty. With that, we will close public comments. Uh, and move on to city council and staff comments, let's start with staff, if staff has any comments.
Yeah, I do have one comment I would like to make, it's actually an announcement I'd like to make, um, about six months ago, our records coordinator was put in a position of having to step into the city clerk position. Um, it was obviously the beginning of the pandemic, our prior city clerk had just retired, and Chloe Woodmansey was willing to step off and serve as interim clerk. Uh, she's done so admirably and effectively over the last six months, and I'm very proud to announce that, uh, as of today, we're removing the interim from her title, and Chloe is going to be our new city clerk, so take me in, moment if you've got one, Chloe. Thank you very much for her input.
All right.
Aye.
Thank you very much, that's very kind of you, and I'm happy to be here, helping everyone like always, so if I, anything I can do better, please let me know. Thank you.
Congratulations Chloe, we're so lucky to have you, you've been fantastic in the last six months as interim clerk, and we're, I'm really excited to have you aboard, uh, as our, our permanent city clerk.
Thank you so much, Mayor.
I'm the holder of the official, uh, city seal.
Yes, that is, that is the truth. Thank you.
Congratulations Chloe, you're doing a great job, I work with a lot of courts, tend to work with many great attorneys.
Everyone's being so nice, thank you. It's overwhelming.
All right, um, so is, uh, any additional staff comments?
That's all, we have concluded.
Okay, we will move on to, uh, council member comments, then it looks like Vice Mayor Brooks has their hands up.
Yeah, I just wanna say congratulations Chloe, I'm so happy to be working with you. I also wanted to add that, um, if you did not notice, that the website is live, and it looks great, and it's also because of your hard work Chloe, so thank you so much.
Thank you.
Um, also, you're welcome. Also, I just wanted to mention that in the United States, black people have lived through a long history of racial injustice and senseless institutionalized violence. As soon as there battles fight along, I encourage Capitolo residents to continue to learn about the Black Lives Matters movement, stand firm, become an ad ally, and attend the upcoming community member forum, I believe, taking place in December. So, thank you very much, and congratulations again to, to Chloe.
Thank you Vice Mayor Brooks, I see Councilmember Botor.
Yes, thank you Mayor, uh, I just want to add for the settlement of, I believe, everybody on the city council, uh, for Chloe, congratulations, you've done a great job in your, in your old position and your temporary position, and with the website, and I think you joined the ranks of, of a couple of people that, uh, have served two jobs at one time in this city, and just, uh, we're very glad that the city manager made this decision, and, uh, happy for that. And the other comment I wanted to make, was that it's, you know, there's, there's, the times getting a little challenging, uh, there's, uh, I heard there's a new senator who's, uh, attempting to try to kidnap the mayor of, of Michigan, uh, these are scary times, because none of us can imagine what's around the next corner, uh, it's put the people that protect us on, on high alert, but I just wanted, uh, again, the man's, our, our Capitol Police Department will be on guard for, for whatever and who knows what, and, uh, just wanna thank them for showing up for work every day and doing the great job they do, thank you.
Thank you Councilmember Botor. Councilmember Bertrand?
Yeah, uh, thank you Mayor, um, I think it's a testament to Chloe that at this time, uh, which usually for a city clerk is one of the hardest times of their four years between election or two years between elections, uh, having to learn all the codes and the regulations that make sure, um, the mechanism of government goes forward, especially at a, a time of election. So it's a pleasure to go into her office, and, um, so I'm so happy she's here. Um, my other comment is, um, in terms of it's a hard time, you know, I'd just like to reflect on the community that we live in. So, you know, Capitolola lived through a flood, and at that time, a lot of neighbors in town and around in the vicinity came out to help with flood victims, whether they're businesses or people that live in Capitolo, or any other places, uh, that had houses in that vicinity, and it was something we all truly remember, it was a wonderful testament to what this community has liked, at Cruz, General, and Capitolo. So, I'd like to also say that we had the CDU fired, and, uh, I've noticed the same thing, a lot of people that I know have either been directly affected or indirectly affected, and the neighbors and friends that turned out to help us, whether it was the GoToFund, or offering to have people save their homes, or take care of pets, or in some cases providing home to the people who live down at the, uh, with the, you know, Foxville Center, you know, if it had tons of pets, I know someone that gave someone a truck so that it carried a hay back and forth, you know, for the horses. So, you know, I think we truly live in and make in areas, and, you know, this outpouring of goodwill and going to help people in, um, the time of need, I think is representative of the community we live in. So, thank you for living in San Cruz, and thank you for all people in San Cruz who help the news.
Thank you Councilmember Bertrand. Um, I would just like to quickly make a couple of comments, I'd like to echo really everything that's already been said, both from, uh, Vice Mayor Brooks, Councilmember Botor, and Councilmember Bertrand, uh, to, to acknowledge the, um, you know, structural discrimination and racism that has been faced by people of color, indigenous people, um, Latinx people throughout history, also to acknowledge the good work of our, uh, Capitolo Police Department, and to acknowledge the, um, the kindness of people within the community when we need to, uh, step up and support one another. Um, I have spent the last few days participating in the League of California Cities Virtual Annual Conference, uh, and that will, uh, come to completion tomorrow. It's been really interesting to see, uh, how this is playing out virtually as opposed to, uh, being there in person with a bunch of people in Sacramento, which is how it usually would be done, um, or I guess to share it with in Long Beach. But it's, uh, I, I really wanna commend the League of Cities, they have done a fantastic job of providing, um, really engaging content and information. Uh, today, uh, we did have, uh, one of the series was on, uh, racial justice and equity, and how cities can be involved in that, and it gave a history lesson on, uh, redlining, and how communities, uh, were, um, you know, certain communities, uh, weren't able to get, uh, home loans because they were considered to be financially risky, because it had a lot of population of people of color, and how that prevented people from building wealth stuffs. I, I really learned a lot, um, today and, and throughout, um, my time on city council, so that was one of the, um, the seminars that I was a part of today, I also took a seminar on, um, uh, how women in local government can join corporate boards, like how you can do a pathway to join corporate boards. Uh, I did another one on municipal revenues, and what we can expect in the coming years. I did another one, uh, today on housing law, and then tomorrow, uh, will be one on labor negotiations, and then our general, uh, assembly to wrap it all up, so it's, it's been really interesting, I just wanted to share that all with you, um, for, for anyone who hasn't been involved in any of the league activities, either, uh, at the division level or with the policy committees or the conferences, I would highly encourage it, I always learn so much, um, and it's really exciting. So with that, I will go ahead and, uh, close council comments, uh, staff and council comments, and we will move on to our consent agenda, so all of the items on our consent calendar will be enacted in one motion, in the form of getting on the agenda, and there's no separate discussion unless a member of the public or the council wants to pull an item for, uh, separate discussion. So I will go first to, um, to Larry, our moderator, to let me know if we've received any comments from the public asking to pull an item.
I do not see any hands raised by attendees, and I do not see any emails on this topic.
Okay, great, we'll come back to council, does any member, uh, Councilmember Bertrand, does he have your hand up?
No, um, I just wanted to talk about the seven C. If I had a question last time, with the increased funding, were we gonna reach out to, um, those who weren't able to participate because of the scholarship fund that was given up? Is there any update on that?
Mayor Peterson, can you spend a minute or do you want to move to the agenda of the evening?
Let's, let's finish the rest of consent calendar, and then, so we'll pull this item from consent calendar, approve, uh, the rest of consent calendar, that's a little bit councilable, and then we'll, we'll take that item separately before we go into general government.
I'll move the balance of the consent calendar.
Sorry, here's the second.
Okay, we have a motion by Councilmember Story, and a second, uh, by Councilmember Botor, uh, before we get a roll call vote, Councilmember Botor, I see you have your hands up, was that just a second's miss, or was that a question on the consent calendar?
That was the second to vote.
Okay, great, okay, we have a motion and a second, can we get a roll call on the vote for consent agenda?
Yes, Councilmember Bertrand.
Aye.
Councilmember Botor.
Aye.
Councilmember Story.
Aye.
Vice Mayor Brooks.
Aye.
And Mayor Peterson.
Aye. Thank you, carried unanimously. Uh, now we'll go back to, uh, item seven C, that was pulled from consent calendar, uh, Councilmember Bertrand has asked for, uh, an update on whether we have contacted the families who, um, pulled out of the, out of the full-time program because they, um, scholarship wasn't enough for them, is that, uh, correct, Councilmember Bertrand? Okay. Do staff have any update on that?
So I'm, uh, is Nikki Bryant on the call this evening, I can't remember, she said she had a conflict this evening, I believe she did say she had a conflict this evening and couldn't drink?
I think, I'm with her.
Aye.
Um, so, yes, in registration, we did reach out to, um, individuals that have been enrolled, and, um, I am not sure if any of them decided to move forward with enrollment, um, we have increased our enrollment pretty frequently, um, with, and I'll, I'll have an additional detailed update or Friday update.
So I'd just like to comment that, um, I'm glad to follow through on that, and I'm very happy with this program and how it's moving forward, so thank you.
Great, thank you very much. Um, so we need to vote on that items separately, correct?
Yeah.
Vote for Nikki Bryant, please.
Second.
We have a motion and a second, can I roll call vote, please?
Yes, Councilmember Bertrand.
Yep.
Councilmember Botor.
Aye.
Councilmember Story.
Aye.
Vice Mayor Brooks.
Aye.
Mayor Peterson.
Aye. Carried unanimously, thank you. We're gonna move on to general government, uh, item eight A was pulled for a future meeting, so we're gonna go to item eight B, solid waste.
Do we have to, do we have to, um, move the rest of the consent, agenda?
We already did, we.
Oh, I'll put this on, okay, sorry.
Yeah, no problem. Uh, so we're gonna go to item eight B, solid waste disposal agreement with Monterey Regional Waste Management District, and I will bring it to staff for Sacramento.
Yes, uh, hi, Mayor Peterson, council, um, I'm trying, I'll, I will try and get this, uh, running smoothly as possible, uh, so I have to share the screen. Sorry, I haven't done both at the same time, so, um, and I'm already running the problem, sorry, um.
No problem.
Okay, we will share, uh, there we go, that's the one I'm looking for. Okay, um, can you see that? Or did it not share?
Yeah, we can see it.
Okay, great, um, okay, so this is, the item for you is an, um, agreement with the Monterey Regional, uh, Waste Management District for a solid waste disposal contract. The city has been working with the, the district for over thirty years, um, so they have, uh, solid waste there. Um, prior to two thousand and ten, if, we did actually, we didn't have a formal agreement, we were just taking theirs and being charged what they called the, the, you know, the tipping rate at, at the gate. Um, in two thousand and ten, we signed an agreement which significantly reduced the costs to the city, um, and as well freight payers, so that, um, we got the same rates as the other jurisdictions in the county. Um, in two thousand and seventeen, um, due to the significant number of changes in California regulations, um, the Waste Management District had to give us a five-year notice of, uh, termination, um, so, and in two thousand and nineteen, we came to the council to, to request, uh, permission to begin negotiations on any contracts. Um, the contract before you, the agreement before you, um, is a thirty-year agreement, currently the city of Capitolo is being charged less than the member agencies that, uh, the Monterey Regional Waste Management District. Um, due to the, um, current economic conditions, um, the Waste Management District has, um, allowed a gradual increase of those, um, fees charged to Capitolo for disposal for the next five years. At five years, we will be paying the same as the main member districts, but understanding, especially with the, the, the current situation with COVID, it felt that it was, it was better to kind of gradually put this in, so it wouldn't be quite the, the same level of impact on the rate pairs. Um, currently, um, garbage, regular waste, yard waste, and commercial organics are hauled to the, uh, Waste Management District, Waste Management District. Um, recycling is currently being taken to the Green Waste Facility in, um, San Jose. Um, because this disposal rate is a factor in the actual costs, um, for collection, um, the city, um, will need to begin negotiations with Green Waste to make changes to our franchise agreement to in, include these, um, increases in cost for disposal in the next five years. Um, and because of that, in all probability, um, there will be an increase in rates paid by Capitolo customer, but as I mentioned earlier, it's a gradual increase over the next five years, not all at once, so, um, hopefully that'll, it'll be easier to absorb. Um, just a reminder, it's a good thing, currently Capitolo residents have the lowest collection rates in all of San Cruz County. Um, we still believe that's gonna be the case, um, but again, we'll have to, this will be part of the negotiation process for the new franchise agreement, it's Green Waste. So the recommended action for the site is to authorize the city manager to enter into an updated agreement with Monterey Regional Waste Management District for disposal of solid waste generated in the city of Capitolo. And at that, I am finished with my presentation, uh, I'm available for questions. In addition, Tim Flanagan, um, the general manager at the Waste Management District is on the, uh, Zoom call, if you have any questions for him.
Great, thank you. Uh, we're gonna take it to council for questions only at this time, Councilmember Bertrand, I see you have your hand up. And you're muted. Okay, we're gonna come back to you, Doc, um, you're still muted, but we're gonna go to stand for comments, and then we'll come back to you.
Oh, thank you.
Yeah.
Yeah, thank you, um, Larry, I just had a question about, uh, where the first of the Capitolo rate, um, on page, to the top of page ninety.
What?
Yeah, the, the first, the figure on the far, uh, left-hand side, the thirty-seven fifty-two, is that how much of a, it will increase?
No, I'm sorry, I, I, I didn't notice until it went out, that the, the, the table got a little, uh, shoot, um, thirty-seven fifty-two, I believe is the current rate we are being charged per ton for, um, um, waste taken, um, to, uh, Monterey Regional Facility.
Uh-huh.
Um, if I'm incorrect, uh, uh, Mr. Flanagan can correct that, but I believe that, that's what that is.
Okay, and therefore then, um, on the next column, the actual, uh, rate would just be going up by about two dollars and forty-eight cents per ton?
Yes, for this fiscal year, and then we increase gradually each jil, July first moving forward, and then to, then at five-year time, it would get to the, the same rate as the member, the, men, member agencies.
Right, okay. Got it, thanks, thank you.
All right, Councilmember Bertrand?
Yes, thank you Mayor, um, I have two questions. Um, one question is I received a letter from a resident of Capitolo, uh, requiring about being able to recycle organics, and, um, I sense that, so they have an organic product for every resident, and that's part of recycling, normal recycling. We only do it, yes, a lot, so I'm wondering if in form of, uh, future negotiations, we can standard city, how reasonable that is? Uh, first question. The second question is, uh, recent laws that were signed by the governor of California is mandating, um, increased recycling of glass, at least, and I don't know exactly what that's limited, implemented in terms of pool implementations, but it's gonna greatly increase the cost of, of reimbursement to the haulers, because they have to recycle that class, and they'll get money quick, so that's gonna be part of our future negotiations.
Um, I will, uh, allow, as far as the first question, um, as far as residential, um, composting, I know there are, there are some laws out there that kind of map up the pathway for residential organics, currently, I think you mentioned the other one, but we are actually, um, we have a commercial organics program for all of the city, um, that Green Waste is implementing, um, but for residential, um, Tim, are you available to talk to that?
I, I am, can the council hear me?
Yes.
Yeah, do you mean that a mayor, members of the council, and Tim Flanagan, the GM for the Waste Management District, and, and yet, the, to your, to your question, council member, we will be working with our organics process, and we're into the same criteria that your city is, and we'll be running a couple of pilot programs that will, uh, probably in the next year or two, look to incorporate, uh, residential, uh, organics, or residential food waste in that, so as we look to develop that, we'll be in contact with staff and let me know what that is, that is something you will have to work through with Green Waste Recovery, you're a hauler, um, but at the backend, for us as a collector, we are going to be working on a system that would accept that, so to be very clear, you have to work that through with Green Waste Recovery, um, first, and, and we'll be working along that in conjunction with that. And, and just for further justification, uh, or clarification, I should say, you will ultimately be charged only ninety-five percent of our member agency rate, so you actually will get a five percent discount that our member agencies, uh, do not, do not receive, so you get a little bit of a discount, uh, under this agreement, uh, if you go forward and execute it.
Well, thank you, Doc, I didn't realize that. You can just read.
My second question was on recycling glass, and how now there's a requirement to, um, incorporate that into manufacturing of glass balls, etc.
Um, I, I don't know the answer, but I, I, we will be, as far as, um, Mr. Flanagan mentioned, we will be, all of these things will be taken, um, into our, our new franchise agreement with Green Waste, because we do have responsibilities for that, and, um, that will be part of what we bring to you, um, when we have that agreement worked out.
Thank you, Mike.
All right, any additional questions from council? Seeing that, we will bring this to public comment, Larry, do we have anyone who has, uh, their hand up, or provided any public comments on this item?
I don't see anyone with a hand up, um, and I do not see any emails on the site.
All right, with that, we will bring it back to council for discussion and a vote. And I see.
Aye.
Oh, uh, Councilmember Botor has his hand up, so is that for Chris, Councilmember, or?
Glad to make the motions of good stock stack, but recommended action.
Aye, second.
We have a motion in a second, can I have a roll call, please?
Yes, Councilmember Bertrand.
Aye, approved.
Councilmember Botor. I think I see him saying aye.
Yep, great, and?
My pretty covered aye.
Thank you. Councilmember Story.
Aye.
Vice Mayor Brooks.
Aye.
Mayor Peterson.
Aye. Carried unanimously, thank you. Let me see which, uh, item we're moving on to, I have a dog trying to eat my homework, so just get, get to the agenda here, my apologies. Uh, we are moving on to the next item, which is... All right, here we go, my apologies. We're moving on to item eight C, establish personnel analyst and deputy city clerk qualifications, and I will go see staff for it, staff report.
Mayor, members of the council, let me just share my screen here. Okay. Now look, all right on the roll screen? Okay. So, just a couple weeks ago, uh, we received notice that the executive assistant for city manager transferred here at Thanksgiving this year, um, and as you may recall, we already have two vacancies in the city manager's department that includes our city clerk's former position, the records coordinator, as well as our receptionist, so this would bring the three number of vacancies in a, uh, six-person department. Um, so we need to, we need to take a look at what the responsibilities are, and do we, and what we're doing right now, and how we're gonna fill it moving forward. Right now, the executive assistant city manager serves as the city's deputy clerk, actually a very important role, because it provides a little bit of backup, um, in the event that the clerk isn't able to do a meeting or put out an agenda packet, we still have to run a meeting, and still have to put out the agenda packet, so it's very important to have a deputy city clerk. Um, in addition, the executive and city manager helps with scheduling my calendar, city hall phones, also takes care of all our personnel, and sort of personnel records and records meetings, um, the recruitment, and then the liability claims. So, when we look at the vacancy, this is the three vacancies that we have in the city manager's department, and really, if you compare it to me, that we could probably reorganize some things at this stage, and so what we're suggesting is, is getting rid of the, um, the, the executive assistant of city manager, and then creating a personnel analyst position, and then creating a deputy city clerk position, uh, and getting rid of the records coordinator. and getting rid of the records coordinator as well. So basically, replacing the, um, the executive city manager with a personnel analyst, and then trying to backfill Chloe's old position, the records coordinator, with a position that would be the deputy city clerk. Um, so, that's basically the structure. Um, so we're proposing to fill both positions on a part-time basis. The, the, the deputy city clerk position, I think we would, we would inquire about people's availability in part-time or full-time, and then evaluate the candidates, and see whether or not we had a good, good candidate to fill a position part-time. Initially, we're thinking to fill that position part-time. The, the advantage of having the deputy city clerk position move over from where it had been to somebody who's directly reporting to the city clerk, is I think it's, it's pretty apparent that we take, um, the, the city clerk's number two, and have them actually report directly to them. So I think it would make for smoother scheduling, training opportunities, and just provide with a more robust sort of overall, um, overall, uh, provision of service than we currently, currently have. Um, we're promoting to fill the, uh, the rec- the, the personnel analyst at the same salary as the executive assistant city manager, and we're proposing a minor above to the records coordinator, um, to bring it up, and also give that deputy city clerk responsibility. Uh, but overall, that doesn't really result in any significant, really, no change in overall cost. So the recommended action would be to improve the creation of the personnel analyst and deputy city clerk job classifications, job descriptions, uh, we need to amend the city's, uh, salary schedule. We also need approval in side letter, the amendment to the, uh, MOU with confidential employees, because currently, the confidential employees identified as all being exempt. Uh, and the personnel analyst, we think it makes more sense as an hourly provision, particularly because, because it would be a twenty-dollar reach off. And then it would be authorized up to recruit for both the personnel analysts and, um, the deputy city clerk to twenty dollars a week. Here we go, and available questions?
Thank you, do we have any questions from councilmembers? Seeing, uh, yes. Okay, seeing none, we will turn it over to public comment. Larry, do we have any members of the public that have, uh, comments on this item?
I do not see any attendees with hands up, and I do not see any emails on the site.
All right, with, with that, we'll close public comment, and bring it back to council for discussion and a vote. Uh, if there's any discussion or motion, go ahead and, uh, raise your hand. I see councilmember Bertrand's hand is up. Uh, you're, you're here, councilmember Bertrand?
Oh, sorry, um, I accept the, uh, recommendation as proposed by the, uh, city manager, and group approving it. All, all right, good job.
All right, we have a motion by councilmember Bertrand, and a second by councilmember Botor. Any additional comments? Seeing none, we have a roll call, please. Roll call votes.
Councilmember Bertrand.
Aye.
Councilmember Botor.
Aye.
Councilmember Story.
Aye.
Vice Mayor Brooks.
Aye.
Mayor Peterson.
Aye. Thank you, passed unanimously. And we'll move on to the final item on tonight's agenda, an overview of the zoning code, public review, and preparation for adoption. Turn it over to staff.
Thank you, Mayor Peterson and city council. Um, can you hear me, okay?
Yeah, we, we can hear you.
Okay, okay, great. Um, good evening, and this evening, I'm here to, um, bring forward the, the zoning code update. We're going to start adoption hearing for the next meeting for a first reading. Whenever we have documents that's three hundred and seventy-eight pages long, I feel it's good to get it out in front of you ahead of time. So really, that was the basis of placing this on the agenda, so I'll do a brief overview, just to, uh, check off some boxes that we got, being right of what the direction you gave us at the last, uh, special meeting that we had, and bring up two items that came up, the planning commission, and from there, I, I wanted to make an opportunity for adoption in hearings for any questions, or I'd, um, would like me to bring back for discussion. Um, so very quickly, this is, uh, the zoning code update process, um, last July, um, you were reviewing, um, but we've been through the majority of this process with a, one public document that went out last year, twenty nineteen, and we just went to another ninety-day or sixty-day public draft. The planning commission reviewed for the second time in October twenty twenty, gave a positive recommendation on the draft. Um, one commissioner, uh, Commissioner Welch had continued to have concerns for the coastal overlay zone, and did not, um, he was a day ago, on the recommendation to city council, just still had concerns of possible overreach. Um, but the planning commission's four, fourth bid was gone, so we mentioned, uh, for sixty, and so currently, um, for, for adoption, and so the final draft has been published for the adoption hearing, but at this point, we are, um, moving forward with, making sure there's no questions left. So, this first topic, Monarch Cove Inn, there have been four different, um, modifications since the twenty eighteen adoption. The final direction from city council was to put the Monarch Cove Inn, um, as, we added vacation rental as a conditional use to that site, and for single family, we added other conditions that a conditional use, um, is required with a single-family home, and allow in conjunction with overnight accommodation use, like access to a viewpoint. Next, um, we went over in depth, chapter two forty-four, the coastal overlay zone. This, we had, um, the coastal commission identifying exactly where any modifications we were questioning, exactly where it came from the state code, without feedback from the coastal commission, and, um, removed anything that was, was not tied back to the state law, and, um, that has been updated, and sent a couple meetings on topic two. Uh, the third topic, Village Park, seeing the, um, we had some not so easy to, uh, uh, local language about how to convert, at the end, at the last meeting, the city council recommendation was to go forth with the, um, staff recommendation, which under the last section, the B, where it was for non-residential use, so it was, um, be relative for commercial and residential uses, the parking standards, and to the map. And then last, the Village Hotel Height, um, the coastal commission staff had recommended, um, a ten-foot limit, and including all rooftop architectural elements. When we went before planning commission, it changed a little bit, and then the plan, our recommendation was to, to the council, was to take away the ten-foot height, clear up where the views of the water from, and then include those rooftop architectural elements. So that captures what we heard at that last, and I just remember at the two last new things that came up that are questions as we're seeing applications start to come through. Um, and, uh, first is drive-throughs and distance measurements. So in the current standard, within the new code states that drive-throughs are prohibited within one hundred feet of a residential zoning district, or residential use, including residential properties outside city limits. There's no rule for how you measure the one hundred feet, so we want to clean that up, and just add one sentence, that distance is measured from any, that's like, feet, 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 shared, and, and for use for the drive-through service, that, including the vehicle aisle menu board, or, uh, example of this, the current McDonald's, I think it's a hundred and ten feet from the residential property line behind it. If they were bringing a, a drive-through, it couldn't stay, it couldn't be, um, within that one hundred-foot setback area. Next is rooftop deck. For the rooftop deck, currently, um, there is no requirement for a design permit for a rooftop deck, that's just on, on the rooftop. Um, when we, when we found out, we would like to add that a design permit is required with planning commission review for any commercial or residential building with a rooftop deck. So that was an error, and we'd like to clean that up. And with that, I, I'm happy to ask you, any council questions?
All right, thank you, Katie. Uh, are there any questions from councilmembers? Councilmember Bertrand.
Well, thank you very much, um, I enjoyed reading this. Um, I have to be crazy to do it, but I did enjoy reading it. And I just would like, um, if you could review the, um, item seventeen point eight eight one zero five, which deals with the Village Hotel, and in particular, I'd like to know a little bit more detail about what this coastal commission, um, recommended, and I'd like a little understanding of what their perspective was. Uh, you sort of briefly touched on a lot of things, and people of the block. And, um, if you could expand on that, you've had extensive conversations with them, so I'm trying to understand where they're coming from.
All right, it's a great question. Um, so during their review, they actually thought that that would be a useful tool for us, and if you're first analyzed, to have a measurement from the block of ten feet. Um, the language about keeping the view and being able to see the greenery above the hotel is directly from our, um, general plan, and I think the, they weren't attached to the ten-foot, I think they just thought they were helping us out. So, I, I don't expect to see that one come back as a bad one. Okay, yeah, thank you very much.
All right, uh, any additional questions? Seeing none, we will bring it to public comment, and I'll turn it over to Larry.
Thank you, Mayor Peterson. Um, I do not see anybody, uh, with a hand up on this item, and I do not see any emails.
All right, then, we will bring it, uh, close public comment, and bring it back to council for discussion and a vote. And I see councilmember Bertrand has his hand up.
Right, thank you very much, Mayor. Um, last time this came to us, we had a general idea of what we felt about things, and I had a comment about the hotel also. And I don't feel that what's been proposed captures what we heard many, many times in public news about what the resident of Capitola would like for the, uh, hotel plans, um, that maybe brought to us at some point in time. So I still have reservations about the, uh, language, thank you.
Thank you, councilmember Bertrand. Any additional comments? We, oh, sorry, councilmember Botor.
Yeah, I read that the recommended action is just to accept the staff's free donation, so I can make a motion that we, uh, expect the, uh, free donation of the recommended action.
Yeah, we have a motion, do we have a second?
I have a second.
Uh, we have a second from councilmember Bertrand. Vice Mayor Brooks, did you have a comment, or were you chiming in on the second?
I was chiming in on the second.
Okay, I think councilmember Bertrand needs to hear it, sorry.
I wasn't trying to.
All right, uh, we have a motion and a second, can we have a roll call vote, please?
Councilmember Bertrand.
I am approving this for the session, sir.
Wait, no, we're not in a discussion, this is a, this is a, a vote, please.
Thank you, Mary.
I approve.
All right.
Great. Councilmember Botor.
Aye.
Councilmember Story.
Aye.
Vice Mayor Brooks.
Aye.
Mayor Peterson.
Aye. Thank you, carried unanimously. Uh, and with that, we've come to the end of tonight's meeting. I think this may have been the shortest meeting of the year, uh, so enjoy the rest of your evening. Thank you so much, uh, councilmembers, thank you to staff. Uh, have a wonderful night, take care of yourselves, and take care of each other. That's it, bye.